It's 5:30, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to say that I appreciate all of you being here. It's nice to see our citizens taking an interest in local government. So, thank you for being here. If you will stand for the prayer, Mr. Jerry Barnes. Say the prayer and then if you would make a standing for the law enforcement and the pledge of allegiance.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come together and to discuss or do the business of Pickens County. Lord, we also ask you to take care of our law enforcement officers all over this country, not just those that have been hurt all over, and our EMS, and all of public service. In thy name I pray, amen.
Amen. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
And next we have employee recognition, and Mr. Barnes will handle that also.
Well, we happen not to be here tonight, but Stanley Volkey has a 10-year service for Pickens County. Give him a hand anyway.
Next, we'll have the financial report, so I'll turn that over to Ms. Stacey Harvey.
Okay. This financial report is for the period ending June 30th, so it's for 50% of our 2016 fiscal year. So, the expenditure budget should be at 50% or less. The total revenue through June 30th is $5,978,271, that's 25.09. That's normal for this time of year. The majority of our revenue comes in later in the year. And then for the expenditures, under the general government functions, the expenditures are $1,592,567, that's 50.48. That's slightly over. The general government buildings isn't 66%. And that's mainly because we've been doing a lot of renovations to, so we can rent the building across the street. So, that budget may need a budget amendment for the end of the year. Under the judicial budgets, the total judicial functions has spent $1,499,480 so far, that's 44.2%. For public safety, the total public safety expenditures are $5,855,934, and that's 48.18%. Under public works, we have total expenditures of $1,178,721, that's 42.14%. For the health department, the senior center, and the MATS program, expenditures are $318,997, and that's 40.37%. For culture and recreation, expenditures are $446,530, and that's 48.07%. Under housing and development, the total expenditures are $288,449, and that's 47.5%. So, overall, through June 30th, we've spent $11,186,78, and that's 46.93%. That's a 3.07% under budget. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures so far this year are $855,334, and that's 41.38%. The airport expenditures are at $127,332, and that's 33.91%. The line item budget reports were sent to all the department heads and elected officials on July 14th, and I have all those if you could look them up. Any questions on the financial report? Okay. I also put a copy of the budget calendar. I sent out the budgets for fiscal year 2017. I know we're only more than halfway through '16, but it's time to start that process again. The front page is our calendar, like the dates that we want to hit so that we can do the advertising and adopt the budget before the end of the year. The second page, if y'all will look at that, that's our commissioner meetings with the department heads. And if y'all see any conflicts in your schedule, feel that we know we can reschedule those. We have about three months before we do that.
Good job. Appreciate it. Okay. So, next on the agenda, we don't have a concern, do we? Do we have anything in old business?
No.
Okay. Under new business, we have a proclamation, and I will read that to you. It's to make Pickens County a heart, a Purple Heart County. So, we are very proud of this. Whereas the people of Pickens County have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have sincerely served their county and this community, their country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families, communities, and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women from Pickens County who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas on April 26, 2014, Governor Nate Fendell officially designated August 7th as Purple Heart Day in Georgia to remember and recognize the parents who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pickens County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim Pickens County as a Purple Heart County and proclaim August the 7th, 2016 as Purple Heart Day in Pickens County honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. And we are going to be placing four signs, Purple Heart designated as Purple Heart City. There will be two, one on the north, one on the south side of Highway 15, and the same on Highway 53. We'll have two on 53. And we are fortunate to have some Purple Heart recipients. Would y'all stand please? And I would like to ask Mr. Martin Barnes to come up and say a few words.
It's always good to be back in historic Pickens County. Many years ago, Cherokee County comprised all the land north and west of the Chattahoochee and Chesapeake rivers except for Carroll County. On December 5th, 1853, the Georgia General Assembly formed Pickens County out of part of Cherokee County and Gilman County. Pickens County is named for Andrew Pickens, revolutionary war hero of the General and Continental Army. Pickens County is famous for the marble, white and pink marble. The pink marble was used to build the elementary schools in Tate and also used to build the Lincoln Memorial in Washington. As said, it's always good to be here. We are proud that you've asked us here as you honor all of our brothers and sisters who were killed or wounded while serving to keep our country free. If, would you like to present the proclamation, give some picture checking, we have a panel of men?
We would.
Also, we have Mr. Mike Conventi, the commander of the local chapter in LJ that formed a new chapter. If you'd like to come up and say a couple of words, introduce yourself, and let them know that in this area, our chapter has been long, and that's a long, hard problem from years ago.
Well, thank you all for recognizing the Purple Heart and the combat wounded veterans. And I ask all of you here, if you have friends, neighbors, sons or daughters, or even if you're a descendant of a Purple Heart, someone who's awarded the Purple Heart, come on up to LJ and join us for the newest chapter in the, probably in the entire nation right now, with 45,000 members nationwide. You're the newest one right at the roof in LJ. We welcome you. And our meeting's tonight at 7:00. Don't speak.
Under action items, we need to approve some minutes. Have you had a chance to look over there?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the regular order meeting, which was June 16, 2016. I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Takes care of that. Let's see. Do we have a, we have a couple of reasons, three reasons. Okay. on May the 10th by Mary Ellen and Roger Schultz requesting a change in the land use classification agricultural to a state residential on a 3.30 acre tract to be located on Sequoia Trail off of Hickory Cove Road, Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, would be to divide a 32.18 acre parcel into two parcels, one being 3.30 and the other 28.88 acres. And rezoned the smaller tract to a state residential to enable friends to purchase the property and build their home on it. A public hearing was held on the 11th of July regarding this application in the Pickens County Commissioners Meeting Room before the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and a testimony from the applicant's son with no public comments, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted five yes and zero no to approve the rezoned request on this parcel. I make a move that we approve this. I need a second.
Second.
Any comments? Okay. Still moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the next one is, okay, let me just read this. The Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on May 5th, 2016 by Pickens County staff requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to highway business on 2.83 acres located at 1124 Camp Road, Jasper, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, would be to correct zoning on this parcel on which an auto service business is located named Turner Tire. It has been located there since approximately 1989 and surrounding parcels owned by the same or already zoned highway business. A public hearing was held on this on the 11th of July. No public comments were made, and the staff, the planning commission voted five to approve, zero to not approve. I think this is just correct in an area. So, I make a move that we approve this, and I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the other, the last one is the Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on May 31st, 2016 by Tommy Quick requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to suburban residential on a one acre tract located on Henderson Mountain Road, Fairmount, Georgia. The intended purpose of the rezoned request, if approved, is to divide a 3.868 parcel into two parcels, one acre tract and 2.868 tract, in order to construct a home on the one acre parcel for an employee. A public hearing was held on the 11th of July regarding this application, and after reviewing the application, the planning commission voted to approve, five yes, zero no. I make the motion that we approve this request.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Still approved. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is a resolution reappointing a member to the Pickens County Families and Children's Service Board. Whereas the term of Michael White on the Pickens County Family and Children's Service Board expired on June 30th, 2016. Now therefore, Michael White is being, hereby being reappointed to the Pickens County Family Children's Service Board for a five-year term beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2021. I make the motion that we approve this.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the next one is whereas the Pickens County Airport Authority legislation was amended so as to reduce the number of members from a seven-member board to a five-member board, four members appointed by the governing authority of Pickens County and one member appointed by the Pickens County Development Authority. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the following persons are hereby appointed to the Pickens County Airport Authority for four-year terms, which begin July 22nd, 2016, and end July 31st, 2020. If any of you are here tonight and stand, I don't think I've seen any of the members, Mr. Don Bogus, Mr. David Johnson, Mr. Ed Wood, Mr. Paul Lorry, thank you, Ed, and Mr. Jerry Edwards is the Pickens County Development Authority appointed, so adopted this 21st day of July, 2016. I make a motion that we approve this appointment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's approved. The next thing is, this was discussed in the work session, where we need two permanent generators for pump stations for emergency use. One of those is located at 694 Pearl Johnson Road, Fairmount, Georgia, and the other one, Jerusalem Church Road, Jasper, Georgia. And we have two local bids, and I like it, they were both local for local providers. And the low bid on that was Jen Spring Power, Mr. Clayton Preble. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve that deal.
Second.
Okay. Still moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. Okay. And then the last thing is Viera Veritas has been doing some inspection work for us on our homes that have been built, and I'm going to ask Mr. Richard Osburn with Planning and Development to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Teddy.
Yes.
We've got a good challenge with our staff in planning and development in that we don't have very many employees. We've only got one full-time residential inspector, and on days that he's on vacation, that's sick, that he's in training, there's nobody to do residential inspections currently. And compared to early 2015, the early 2016 number of permits for new single-family homes was up by 81%. So, we've got new development on the residential side, and he really needs some help, just a backup. Not every week, but you know, a few times, whether it's 10, 15, 20 days total in the year. And so, we really can't justify hiring a new full-time staff member, second inspector. And so, as an alternative, Vira Veritas, which currently conducts commercial inspections and plan reviews for the county, they're open to a revised agreement in which they, as certified inspectors, would provide residential inspections on an as-needed basis. And as a cost example, if a Vira Veritas inspector works a normal eight-hour day for 20 days out of the year, it would cost the county $12,000. If the county hires an additional full-time inspector, it's going to cost the county over $30,000. So, this would be significant cost savings.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. It sounds like a no-brainer. I make a motion that we accept this service agreement.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's passed. Thanks, Richard. Okay. We've got through the agenda, and now we're down to guests and comments. And we have Mr. Jeff Squires that's going to make comments and give us a press conference.
So, I thank the Commission for the opportunity to present to all my neighbors from the Grandview Cove subdivision and all the subdivisions in the area. We all know that last year, Dollar General came in and attempted to get a rezoning request on the property on the other side of the street from the Old Mountain Store that's there at the corner of Cove and Grandview Road. And you remember historically, the Commission, based upon the recommendation of the planning and development team here in the county, voted that down as an inappropriate use of property. And so now, what's happened is, is Dollar General, actually a contractor, developer, from the Calhoun area, has come in and said that he wants to do the same thing on the opposite, on the opposite corner of that, of that intersection. Now, of course, that property is currently zoned HB, highway business. And it was zoned HB back when they put the zoning in place for all these properties, and the owners of the properties could simply say, "I want my property zoned to this." The Commission at that time, sole commissioner, decided to grant that request, and the little business that was in the, you know, the Lost Mountain Store, whatever it's called, continued to be able to operate, but now the highway business is owning, you know, certain things. So, now, the county commissioners do not get an opportunity to vote on that, to vote on that zoning because it's already in place. But that doesn't really change anything. It's just as inappropriate to put a Dollar General store on that corner as it was on the other corner. So, some of us in the area got together and said, "Well, what can we do about it?" And so, I'd like to just very quickly run through these slides here and throw some points that we've made to the planning and development department here at the, at the county commission's office, you know, at the county government offices here, to kind of just bring everybody up to speed as to where we are on this thing. Here we are. So, why in fact are these neighborhoods up in arms over this proposal? Well, in fact, we're not against a business being there. Those businesses that have been there, Curio Shop, Taxidermy Shop, Fitness Center, they've all been there, and nobody's even thought about it because they're low-impact, low-volume businesses that have little safety and environmental impact on the neighborhood. This latest proposal, however, has a number of characteristics that make it incompatible with a residential neighborhood. So, let's kind of zoom through these issues one by one. Okay. Per Dollar General's own website, this size Dollar General store would generate over 114,256 customer visits per annum. Now, if you figure that not every customer visit is going to generate cars, probably around 90,000 to 100,000 visits per year are going to show, show up, it's cars per year showing up on that lot. Now, on slide seven, this is a reference data that I have from Dollar General's own website that proves this. In order for a store like this to make a profit, the stock must be turned over regularly. This generates many visits per week for Dollar General and vendor suppliers. You can see this in any Dollar General store. They constantly have Pepsi, you know, Coca-Cola, Wonder Bread, you name it, may feel both. They've got them all coming into their locations. So, it's a fact that Cove Road is a number-two high-traffic county road, and it has a very dangerous section as it crosses Swamp Creek. Large trucks find it difficult to walk the road. How many times have you been behind a log truck where they frequently block traffic on a dangerous stretch? And you're sitting there wondering if somebody's going to rear-end you, or somebody's going to come around the escars and hit somebody. It's a dangerous area. It is so dangerous that there have been numerous accidents on the road. I've got some slides with data on them to show that, from the state control and from 911. This includes, you know, where vehicles of different types have actually jumped a safety barrier. And the line that you can't see there is, we need a professional, independent traffic study performed that includes measured traffic volume. So, we really need to know what are we facing here in terms of traffic volumes. That's our opinion. So, again, if you look at this, if you look at our county ordinances, in this particular chapter of the Land Development Standards Access Point Reportments, it says that in all commercial developments where a lot of bucks more than one street, the county development officer may require access to be in the street of the lowest classification when necessary to lessen serious congestion on the major street. What this says is that Cove Road, we all know, has way more traffic than Grandview Road. When you look at the site plan in a minute, you're going to see that their ingress and egress from the property is planned to be on Cove Road. What we're saying is if you were going to develop the property, the ingress and egress ought to stay where it is, on Grandview Road, because that is the road of the lesser classification. Now, why is it that the developer didn't do that? He didn't do that because he can't fit the store size that he wants to put on that size property if he turns it around the way it is now. So, again, it's an economic issue to him. It's a safety issue to us. It is unquestionable that Cove Road has a higher traffic volume. This traffic study that should be performed will endorse that. The county land development officer, they require that the access be on the lowest classification road to lessen serious congestion. So, again, we're asking if the property goes in, that it means that we need to require that the access and egress be as it is today on Grandview Road. All right. Now, line of sight issues. An access control plan shall be drawn to scale and shall contain the following information: the distance of sight in each direction from the point of access for a distance of 500 feet. And this is especially important if the ingress and egress is correctly changed to Grandview Road. You will note that they don't have 500 feet of line of sight on Grandview Road. So, if they put it on Cove Road, they've got 500 feet, another reason for them to want to put the ingress and egress on the more dangerous road. All right. So, let's talk for a minute about their operational practices. Dollar General has a history, long history, of messy appearances of their store that's incompatible with residential neighborhood and actually has code violations in merchandise displays outside of the store. Dollar General has a history of violating county ordinances concerning delivery practices as well. The pictures you are about to see were taken in Pickens County very recently, and this happens every day at all Dollar General locations. And by the way, also at Family Dollar and all the rest of the Dollar stores, they basically all have the same problem. They've got to change their stockover frequency or frequency in order to make a buck. If you want to see more pictures, we got plenty of them. Here's a vendor not using the loading area. That is a code violation. They're not allowed to park on consumer parking, okay? Notice the messy appearance of storing items outside of the store. Again, code violation. Here's two vendors not using the loading Here's two vendors not using the loading area. The white block truck is actually blocking the entrance drive. And it's not just their vendors, it's also Dollar General trucks. Here's a Dollar General truck doing the exact same thing. You'll notice that they really can't even get effectively into the loading door that they have built onto this property because they've got stuff in the area and the truck drivers would have to move their product in and around it. And that is frequently seen at Dollar General stores in and around the area. Here's an example of a code violation where they're putting materials for sale right at a handicap parking spot. A handicap man should be able to pull up into this parking spot here, put the little, you know, thing that comes down and come out there with their, you know, power wagon and be able to go in there. This manager of this store obviously does not care for handicap people coming to their store. Again, here's the back of the one on Church Street. They've got all kinds of trash. This is actually recyclables. They're trying to be good eggs at recycling, but little recyclables end up. They end up on a messy set of these things. And oh by the way, you see that concrete pad over there? That's blocking the actual ingress and egress to the, to the door that's intended to be used for deliveries. So basically this company doesn't give a rip about obeying the rules that are put in place for them to stock their stores. So where do we get this traffic information? We got it from Dollar General's own website. And an industrious member of our community dug this out. Now for a 7,300-foot store over here on the left, this would generate customers per year of 91,656. If you extrapolate that up to 9,100 square feet, that'd be well over 120,000 customer visits. And I figure most of them are one person coming in a car, but some of them are two people coming in a car. So again, if you back down to around 91,000 cars per year generated by that. So if you divide that by 360, you're going to come up with a whole bunch of visits per week, many, many hundreds of visits, excuse me, per day, many hundreds of visits per day into a Dollar General store. And just think about it, what do you see at a Dollar General store? People constantly coming in and out and in and out. And we can see that from being their neighbors. Again, this proposed store is 9,100 square feet. So the traffic conclusion, we believe and ask that an extensive traffic study be performed at developers' expense so that the county staff and commissioners can study and make a determination whether this intrusion into a residential area makes sense for everybody in Pickens County from a safety perspective, including Dollar General, okay? The current traffic study, which was submitted just a day or so ago by the developer, has errors in it. And the errors are easily demonstrable, including how many visits per day are coming, coming to a Dollar General store. If they can make a mistake on a very simple issue like how many, you know, visits a store is going to get based on square footage, how can we trust what they've put down on paper? And by the way, put their engineering stamp on to say that they got it right. What they did was they went into the Georgia DOT regulations and they looked up, a business that would be correctly characterized for, you know, for that type of store, but that's the average of all those types of stores, successful ones and unsuccessful ones. And we all know that Dollar Generals are very successful, so they're going to be on the high end of that estimate and have simply used the wrong numbers. Yeah, and I'll be working with the county staff to find out those, what I believe are errors in their judgment. And we really need an independent assessment of the traffic impact here, either done by the county or someone that the county hires to do it, because I don't, I personally don't trust these guys to do the right thing. Note that under the current zoning rules, that the move of this property to highway business, done in the past, would be denied if this property is not on a state highway. So if they try to get this zoned now, highway business is not allowed unless it's on a state highway. We can ignore this, but it is a safety factor for our day-to-day lives. I don't care that this thing is moved to highway business before the county commissioner's got a, got a chance to vote on it, or got a chance to re-vote on it, or don't get a chance to vote, it doesn't really matter to me. The reason we need to look at it now, is this an appropriate use of this property for this traffic situation on a county road, not a highway road? And note that all the other Dollar Generals are on state highways in Pickens County, 515, 523, and 136. Parking spaces, this is a killer. The preliminary plan shows that the proposed building would be 130 feet by 70 feet for a total of 9,100 square feet. The parking plan submitted does not conform to Pickens County Codes of Ordinances, Section 67-1 of the Civil Act, which requires one parking space for 250 square feet per retail store. So they've got to have 36.4 parking spaces. The plan submitted reflects 34, 36 spaces, but six of those are beside the building blocked off by the off-street loading areas. I'll show you a picture, they sent them over. The lot is so small, there is not enough room to require 36 spaces and a loading area that meets the requirements of the loading area ordinance. So because they had to turn the building the way they turned it to get it fit, this is what we're looking at. Right here, now this is an eye chart, I'm sorry, I'm old too, you know, but what you got here is 15 and 17 or so parking spots up front and then up there in this area, right here in the middle, is where they're supposed to have their loading area. Now the next pair of pictures, what you're going to see is much more important. This one right here, there's a zoom in on the loading area. Now those cross-hatched things that you see there are little dollies that I cut out, right, using my, my calipers, my micrometer to show a 14-foot wide, and I only used a 40-foot long trailer, right? That's not a big one, that's, that's a small one, that's a short trailer, okay? Now you see those six parking spots over there? How is, how is a citizen going to get their car into those six spots if we've got two trucks in there? For that matter, if we've got one truck in there, how are they going to get their, their cars in those spots? In my opinion, those six spots, those six, you know, parking spots are not valid parking spots. If you go back up, well, so why did they use all that room in the back, right? The answer is because they can't get around to it. To put the store on the lot this way and make it fit, there's actually, up, up front here, there's a detention pond, which is going to catch all the runoff from the, from the parking lot surface, right, from the hard scrap, right? Well, in the back, there's another detention pond that's going to catch all the runoff coming from the Grandview Cove subdivision. And I was very worried about this because my property backs right up to this part. What I was worried about is they'd change the lay of the land there and all that water would come back. Well, I'm glad to report that they do have a sensible plan for handling groundwater runoff from the Grandview Cove subdivision, but it puts another detention pond back there that's not shown on this side. They can't put anything behind the store because that's where the septic tank, you know, that's where the septic tank system sits. You can't build anything on top of the septic tank system. Now there was some anecdotal information out there about, well, this property would never perk before, you know, why is it perking now? I'm glad to report to you that our state people took that issue off hard. I really think they did a great job. And they got in their little Jeep and went out there with a shovel and they dug a hole and they perked it themselves. They didn't depend upon the perk test from a vendor that has a vested interest in that perk test passing, they got out there and perked tested it themselves. That's the kind of cooperation that I think is good. So now we can say this property does perk. But causing it to perk means that they have to put their store in this way and they're trying to put 100 pounds of stuff in a 75-pound bag, that's what they're trying to do. They just don't have room to fit this size store on this lot. By the way, they have to reduce the size of the store, what does that do? It reduces their profits. They don't want to reduce the size of their store because they're trying to make a buck. Now I approve of that, I'm a capitalist, right? But I also don't want to make a buck running over the safety and the environmental needs of the community. So let's move on, there's, again, there's the, the parking spots that were blocked. Anybody with a caliber can do this, you don't have to be an engineer to do that. Now let's talk about the off-street loading areas. Basically, what, what this says is that the county ordinances require two loading spaces for retail businesses with more than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. There's simply not adequate space on this property for the required loading areas and the required loading areas are not shown on the current plan. They only got one loading area. And oh by the way, they also want to put their dumpster. Their dumpster slab is the, is the place where they want to put the, if you look at the labeling on that diagram, they want to put their dumpster there too. Sorry, that's going to interfere with proper loading. And oh, another thing, let's talk about this too. My opinion, somebody should be looking at how those trucks have to move around this lot in order to get into the loading area. My opinion again, I think it would be very difficult for truck drivers to back into or pull straight into that loading area and what's that mean that they're going to do? They're going to do the same thing they do everywhere else, they're going to use consumer parking to park their, their trucks because there's simply not enough room. I want to see some analysis done as to how they're going to move those trucks around on, on this lot. Again, appropriate, appropriate use, if we were zoning this for highway business and it's located on a high busy county maintained road, the Pickens County Code of Ordinances states that generally highway commercial districts are considered unsuitable above a single-family residential district because of the uses permitted in the district and their associated off-site impacts. This is what should be driving, in my opinion, the county staff's analysis of this, okay? The ordinance isn't going to be, the zoning isn't going to support it, but again, appropriate use, is this the right thing to do for the safety of the citizens of Pickens County? This should be their guiding principle, in my opinion. So what are we asking the county commissioners? And by the way, I want to say this, our county staff and our county commissioners have been terrific. And I believe they've been terrific to us and terrific to the developer, representing both sides impartial, right? I think we've got the facts lined up on our side with the presentation as, with the proposal that's currently submitted. I don't want anybody to get the idea here that we should be attacking these people. I don't want to say that they've been on our side, but they've been open to input and open to working with us, right? And I don't know which way this is going to go in the future, but I personally can't complain about my treatment or the treatment of anybody that I know that's been working with them on a day-by-day basis, so. Here's what we're asking. We want you to require, please, a comprehensive traffic study not performed by the developer or his engineers here, that takes a look at the ingress and egress analysis and the line of sight analysis for the Grandview Cove ingress and egress issues, right? Then, before issuing any land disturbance or building permits, instruct the county staff to require review and make public comment on these issues: traffic safely, parking space allotments, off-street loading areas, and appropriate use, right? And we feel that these decisions must be public and transparent so that not only do they understand, not only do we understand how they were made, but why they were made. I want to see the analysis that shows that a trucker can move his park, his truck around on that lot effectively. Now I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a mechanical engineer, I happen to be an electrical engineer by trade, but you don't have to be an engineer to understand parking a truck, right? This is something that everybody in this room can understand very easily. This is simply a data slide, I'm sorry, Jim, Jim has nicely put together 911 center calls put together for us. He was my law enforcement officer here on the county staff, or he was my touch point for law enforcement issues. I didn't get the 911 center, but not, the Georgia State Patrol worked 95 accidents there in five years and the, on Cove Road, and the Georgia State, and the 911 people, which is basically the city of Jasper, right, they worked 127, I believe, over five years. So there's been many hundreds of accidents on these roads.